Go ahead and call our meeting order and if I please get the city clerk to read the remote meeting instructions.
Pursuant to Governor Enslay's emergency proclamation regarding suspending certain provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. During the COVID-19 outbreak, the Tappanish City Council will not accept in-person public comments. All members of the public wanting to comment on city council agenda items. May submit written comments to include your name and address for the record. In advance by email to city clerk at city of Tappanish dot U S. By four P M on February twenty-two, two thousand twenty-one to be read during the meeting. Call in information for listen only mode is two five three, two one five, eight seven, eight two. Meeting ID eight six three, one six zero three, eight seven nine seven, pass code one one zero nine eight three. Email city clerk at city of Tappanish dot U S or call five oh nine eight six five six seven five four with questions.
Thank you. If we'd all please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Which stands for nation.
Their city clerk would please do roll call.
Mayor Oaks. Mayor Pro Tem Savedra here. Councilmember Belton.
Here.
Councilmember Seha.
Here.
Councilmember Duval. Here. Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Present.
Let the record show we do have full attendance and a forum.
And item three, approve the agenda for tonight.
Through the agenda for tonight in its entirety.
I second it.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Jimenez and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem to approve the. Can agenda for tonight. All in favor signify by eye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll move on to item four. Advance public comments received by four P M on February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one to be read by staff at the meeting.
Mayor, let the record show the city did not receive public comment by the stated deadline.
Moving on to item five, the consent agenda. All matters on the consent agenda have been provided to each council member for review. And are considered to be routine or have been previously discussed. And will be adopted by one motion and vote without discussion. However, if a council member desires, any item on the agenda will be discussed before any action is taken on it. Item five A. Approved minutes of the February first, two thousand twenty-one study session. Five B, prove the minutes of the February eighth, two thousand twenty-one regular council meeting. Item five C, approve payroll checks numbered three, five, two, zero, five. Through three, five, two, one, five, and the electronic transfer in the total amount of. Two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and six cents dated February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Item five D, approve claims check numbered nine, three, two, eight, six through nine, three, three, five, four. And the electronic transfer in the total amount of. Two hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and three dollars and forty-one cents dated February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. And void checks N R nine, three, two, five, nine, and N R nine, three, two, five, nine dash two. I entertain a motion.
I move to approve to, I move to approve that the consent to be adopted in its entirety.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor from Mayor Pro Tem Savedra and seconded by Councilmember Garcia. To approve the consent agenda in its entirety. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by eye.
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 Any opposed? Moving on to item six, new business. Item six A, it'd be A B twenty-one dash zero, one, zero ordinance, two thousand twenty-one dash zero, two. Amen, chapter fifteen point zero one of the Tappanish municipal code. City managerhood.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Before you is, once again, a recap is ordinance fifteen, zero, one. Point zero, one, oh, is the adoption of the, the reference codes to the. To the National Flood Insurance Program that were adopted in two thousand and nineteen. This brings our codes up to date and we have Victor Shaw, our permit coordinator here to present on this item.
Thank you, Lance. Mr. Mayor and Council, Victor Shaw, permit coordinator. And there are, there are two agenda bill and ordinances on tonight's agenda for council consideration. The ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero, two and zero, three. So I'd like to cover them together because they are really interlinked. How, how they're brought forth. So as I was going through this, I thought a little bit of history about the flood ordinances for the city. The city of Tappanish entered the National Flood Insurance Program in nineteen seventy-five. In nineteen seventy-eight, all lands north of the railroad tracks were designated as being in the hundred-year floodplain. And then, in order to remain in the, the insurance program, the city adopted. The flood damage prevention chapter and it's chapter fifteen thirty. That was done in two thousand and seven, was updated again in two thousand and twelve. The, the purpose of this code is to ensure that all construction in the one hundred-year floodplain is done to prevent. And minimize damage for major, I mean, a major flood event. I'm in two thousand and nineteen, Washington State Department of Ecology updated. The Washington State Model Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance. All jurisdictions that participate in the National Flood Insurance Program are required to adopt the state model. In their flood code, but these jurisdictions were given flexibility to only doc, adopt. Those portions of that code that apply to their geography. So, for example, the city of Tappanish, we don't need the sections about tsunami in our regulations. So with that, I participated in a joint exercise with the Department of Ecology. To amend chapter thirteen or fifteen thirty flood damage prevention to align with that state model ordinance. Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero, three contains the federal and state regulatory requirements. For local flood damage prevention regulations. It strengthens, strengthens flood damage prevention measures. And most importantly, it allows the city residents to continue participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. I'm, I thought I'd go over a few of the specifics of what's. What this ordinance does. It greatly simplifies the text of chapter fifteen thirty, making it easier to administratively enforce. It properly identifies the floodplain administrator as the city manager. This provides the correct level of authorization in the Tappanish Municipal Code in the event of a major flood. And then also for any flood area designation changes for circumstances like annexations and subdivisions. It establishes variance criteria concerning flood damage prevention. And it would require the hearing examiner to adhere to chapter fifteen thirty when granting variances in the floodplain. It provides specific regulations for development and construction in the floodplain that will reduce the risk of. Damage in the event of a major flood. And it requires that certain accessory structures be built to prevent flood damage. And this is a new requirement. And then all this, this requirement in the, the flood code then necessitates a change in the building code. That has been adopted by the city. So with that, I'll, I'll switch over and I'll talk a little bit about ordinance twenty twenty-one dash O two. Which is an amendment to the international and residential building codes that are, are adopted by the city. The amendments to chapter fifteen thirty, which is the, the flood code. Requires that all apparent structures, detached garages and small storage sheds. That are built in the one hundred-year floodplain be built to prevent flood damage. The majority of these types of struc, structures. Currently do not require a building permit, so they're, they're exempt from the building code. So example, you know, like the small storage shed, you might see someone buy from Home Depot. That, that currently is exempt from the building code. So as I just said, the International Building Code and Residential Codes currently. Currently exempt these small structures from needing a permit. But these exemptions do not specific, these exemptions are not specifically listed like in the flood code. So for example, in the flood code, they, they have that list of detached garages, small storage sheds. In the residential code, they're listed by the square feet of the building. So for example. Our residential building less than two hundred square feet is exempt from the building code. So what this ordinance would do would remove those exemptions for these types of structures being built in the one hundred-year floodplain. And it would require a building permit for the, any type of construction. The permit requirements for these structures are minimal compared to that of a larger structure. So basically, what these structures have to be is they have to be made of flood resistant material. And they have to be anchored to prevent flood, flotation in a flood. So with that, now I'd like to take a moment and answer a few questions from Councilmember Duval. That were provided. To us before. Before the meeting. So I'll just go through her questions here. One of her questions was how much would a, a building permit cost? For residents wanting to build structures in the floodplain. So that's, I guess that's kind of a twofold answer. For the, the ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero, two, which would. Bring these other structures requiring a building permit. That would be. The minimum fee for a building permit, which is twenty-four dollars. If it's for other construction already controlled by the, the flood. Code and the building code, those building permits are based on the cost of the valuation of the building. So that, that's price structures already in place. How would someone get this permit? So basically, they would contact me. Lot of times they'll submit the application and then I'll go through the code and determine what requirements their particular building would, would need. You ask how many, how many houses or residents does the Tappanish city limit have in the floodplain? So basically, that's, the floodplain is everything north of the railroad tracks. So it's approximately about half of the city. I, I don't have the exact number of how many houses or residents or businesses that, that encompasses. But I hope that kind of gives you an idea of. The part of the city that's in the floodplain and that these two ordinances apply to. And then you ask, what about existing structures listed in the ordinance? Would property owners need to make renovations or would they be grandfathered? So the question is no, existing structures would not have to come up to the flood code, so they are grandfathered. The exception to that answer would be is if. They wanted to do a remodel that exceeded fifty percent of the valuation of the structure. Or if the structure was damaged, like in a fire or a flood, and that damage exceeded fifty percent of the structure. Then the whole structure has to be brought up to the, the flood code. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions that the council may have.
So I don't know if these are questions. Go ahead.
Oh wait, Clara, go ahead.
Thank you. I don't know if these are questions or more of my concerns. And I did read everything you've got in there and honestly, I think some of that is silly because. We would have to get a permit for a playhouse. And I thought, are you kidding me? We're gonna make people who are trying to make their neighborhood better. Who are trying to provide a safe playground for their kids. We're gonna charge them a permit fee, which if I happen to be a little back in the olden days, always considered the poor part of town. So we're gonna have the people who live in the poorest part of town have to pay more live in the better part of town. And I don't think that's fair. I don't think that, because first of all, yeah, they have to pay a permit. Which you make it sound like it's not a big deal, it's twenty-four dollars minimum. But then you're also telling me that they now need to get certain sort of material, building material that's sturdier. To sustain this flood. Well, that's gonna cost them more money than if I lived on the other side of town. And then you're telling me that the insurance, well, some of us that live in the east side of town. Do cannot afford insurance to begin with because it is so expensive. And here we are now as a city, instead of trying to promote. To go ahead and make your neighborhood and your home look better. And provide a safer playground for your children, we're going to now punish them and have them pay more. And I just, I don't think it's fair. I mean, my mind tells me, yeah, it's fair, we need to do this, blah, blah, blah. But my heart says, when is enough enough? These people can't afford anymore of this. And I personally looking at it now and I read all of it. Yeah, I, I don't like it. I know how I'm voting because I am not gonna tell somebody you need to pay a permit fee for a playhouse for your kids. I, I just think it's silly. It's not fair. It's not gonna be same for the whole town. You're only gonna punish them because they chose, they could only afford to live on this side of town. I don't think that's right. I just don't agree with it. Oh, Peter, go ahead.
Um, so my question was in regards to the need for having this amendment in regards to the. The, the structures that are, like you were saying. You know, detachable and storage sheds and things like, what, what's the, what's the need for us to do that or? The motivation for that to be brought?
Okay, so. I, I'd like to address that. So when, when I went through my initial session with the Department of Ecology. I, I have to admit, I, I kind of had the same reaction that I'm, that the council is expressing. But. To require these small structures, for example, to be built out of flood resistant material. So example, from solid wood versus cheaper. Plywood, exactly. So if, if, if it's just a high water flood event that the city experiences. Those. Smaller storage sheds or playhouses, they're built out of that press board, they get ruined. But if they're, if they're built out of, you know, a solid wood or vinyl or metal. Then they, they survive the flood. They don't, you know, they don't get damaged. So there's, there's one reason for it. Another. Explanation I, and I got this from Department of Ecology is, is like the. The, the Home Depot storage sheds you'd have in your backyard. The, the, the items that you may put in there, you know, your lawnmowers and et cetera. Well, you know, a lawnmower. A riding lawnmower, for example, I mean, that's fairly expensive. And again, if you, if you have a flood event that has current to it. And the building is not secured to the ground, it can wash away. If it's actually built according to, you know, what the flood ordinance will have, you know. It needs to be of solid material and anchored to the ground, at least after the flood, you still have your lawnmower. Might be damaged, but you still have it. So those are, those are a couple of examples as I went through the. My initial training with the Department of Ecology. So I don't know if that answers your questions or not, but those are, those are a couple of the reasons why they, the. The model flood ordinance from Ecology has that requirement.
And if I can add, the, the purpose for the permit is solely for someone from the city. To go and inspect just the affixation, affixation to the property. We're not inspecting the building, the shed, the playhouse. It's just to make sure that, yes, it has been reinforced. And it's, it's, it meets the requirements of the code. So the twenty-four dollars is just, is recouping the cost of having. An inspector go out and, and make sure that that has been done for the code.
Again, it's a playhouse. I don't understand why we need you to come and look at it. I mean, I was, I, I lived here on East Side forever and yes, I was one of the individuals who was here when we had the flood. And yes, I had a metal shed and yes, it was ruined. So even metal sheds can be ruined. Mine was, so I had to get rid of it. It was anchored, but it was also bad with all the stuff coming too. But to me, I just think it's brother trying to take little kids' money away and I just don't think this is right. I think we need to really look at this before we start doing that. Because it's not fair to the people who live on the east side of town have to pay more money.
Lance, does, what effect does this have of not passing these ordinances on the city's capability of having flood insurance? It's been designated a flood area. The city didn't do that. The city didn't say everybody on the north side of town, sorry, but you gotta do this. That was done by other people. So what's the effect on the insurance?
Okay, what, what, what would happen is then we would be out of compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program. And if there would be, we, this, as a city, and if there would be a, an event. That those people that would, that would lose those items would not be eligible for FEMA to help replace those. And this kind of came up the last time we did that also. The school district had some, oh, what do you call those freight boxes that they're storing their softball equipment in? They were sitting over there by the old high school and, but they were on the, they were in the floodplain. Remember the floodplain is, is defined by. Everything north of the railroad tracks between the railroad tracks and the river. When the railroad tracks were built, they're elevated up two or three or four feet. And that creates a dyke all the way from basically. Parker all the way past. So everybody on that side enjoys being in the, the floodplain. And this is one of the, the requirements that FEMA is, is, as they update these ordinances and programs. To hopefully reduce the amount of damage that would happen if there would be an event. And so it's a continual update. We're gonna experience that. These are required updates by R C W. It's already be, that have already been adopted by the state of Washington. And we need to come into compliance to do that. Yeah, it's not fair. It's an expense. We're trying to keep that down as, as low as possible. But we need to, to keep those, to be in compliance. If those buildings, if they're not. Anchored down, they could, they could pick up with the water, go down and do damage to the next home or down the street. Or they could go down and pile up at a certain spot and change the. The flow of the water that could affect another part of town or another area. It's a lot of hypothetical stuff, but. Those are the requirements that we have to comply with.
Right. And, and Lance, if I could, I, I can also add some information to your question. Currently, there are two hundred and fifty-seven. Residences within the, the floodplain that have National Flood Insurance. Right now, their, their average annual premium is seven hundred and thirty-one dollars. If they lost that, if the city lost their, their rating. Those residents would have to go out on the, the open insurance market and buy, buy their flood insurance. Flood insurance is often, or is, is required if you have a mortgage. Under the, the National Flood Insurance Program. There's fifty-two million, five hundred. Fifty-two million, five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars of worth of coverage. To the city residents in the floodplain.
And that, and that is, it's, we would lose coverage for the whole city. So even our city properties would no longer be, it's, it's not just the properties that. Don't want to participate. It would be as a condition for the whole city to get coverage. We have to adopt this ordinance.
So it basically sounds like we don't have a choice.
Well, I mean. Keep insurance, we don't.
We have a choice to keep insurance, though. Unfortunately, yeah.
So Victor, you're saying if, if we don't adopt this. Our insurance, our flood insurance would go up for everybody? Do you know how much?
That number I don't know. I, I don't know what. Flood insurance would cost if, if someone just had to add it onto their private homeowner's insurance. Without being in the flood, the National Flood Insurance Program.
But bottom line, FEMA, if we don't adopt this. We're done. They're, they're not gonna, we're not gonna get any assistance from them whatsoever.
Correct.
Correct.
And that's for the whole city.
Correct.
Just the north side that has been designated a floodplain.
And that's just the one ordinance, the twenty twenty-one dash zero, three.
So existing, so just to kind of recap those questions. Everything between the railroad tracks, which is a man-made dyke and the Yakima River are in the floodplain. The existing structures, whatever that are already built, don't need to comply unless. They're grandfathered in and they don't need to comply unless they're remodeled. What else? What were the other questions? Yeah, basically, if somebody wanted to know if they were in the floodplain, yes, they are if they're in that area. But if they came to the city for a permit, it's one of our requirements is to inform them. If they're in the floodplain and what the additional regulations would be to be able to comply.
Yes, and, and also, just to, just to recap. So it, it is. Ordinance. Twenty twenty-one dash zero, three, that requires these small structures to be built. In a manner that are floodproof. And then it would be the building code would be the mechanism to ensure that that happens.
That's the, the first ordinance that we're discussing.
Correct.
Well, I do wanna say that I think my mom was telling me that per year she pays over two thousand dollars on flood insurance. So, you know, I don't, you know, twenty, twenty-four dollars for a permit versus an increase to that amount. I think is, is better, in my opinion, right now.
Yeah, and again, anybody that's in that floodplain that has a mortgage are required to carry that flood insurance. I mean, that's not the city requiring that.
FEMA requires that and the lending agency to protect their investment. So.
I don't like it either. Uh, yeah, I don't like the fact that it's gonna affect the majority of the much lower income people of the city because. You know, we all know that the zones in our city and we are, we're aware of. Of the demographics of the people that live in certain areas of the city. So I, I, I'm not comfortable with it. I. And I think it made me even more uncomfortable to know that it doesn't even really seem like we can not adopt it. Like it, we don't really have a choice in regards to not adopting it because then the impact to. Like it, we don't really have a choice in regards to not adopting it because then the impact to the city residents would be much greater than it would be if we adopted it. And then it would be still impacting some people. But again, the, uh, the city residents are a bit more underserved.
And we do, um, for the past two years, we have only issued one permit per year in that area. For folks that were doing work, remodeling work on their, you know, major remodeling on, on their house. So, um, it would be when someone were to come in and apply for a permit for a storage shed. That, that's when that retire, that requirement would be imposed on them.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Well, I don't.
Get permit.
I don't necessarily like it either, but welcome to, welcome to government regulations.
Okay, so in that case, I would like to move to approve this ordinance. Uh, twenty twenty one dash zero three.
You're two and three.
And we need to do, well, we got to do one at a time.
We need to go for both separate or together? Okay, so, uh, motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty one dash O three. Uh, to amend.
We're on zero two.
Is that correct? The right one?
We're on zero two right now.
Sorry.
Okay.
I went to the wrong one. Sorry, guys. Um, ordinance twenty twenty one dash O two. Uh, to amend chapter fifteen point zero one of the Toponish Municipal Code.
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. We have a motion on the floor from Mayor Pro Tim Sovedra and seconded by Councilman Belton to approve ordinance twenty one, twenty twenty one dash zero two, amend chapter fifteen point zero one of the Toponish Municipal Code. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
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 All those oppose?
Aye.
The, the ayes are going to have it. Motion passes. We move on to six B. Which is AB twenty one dash zero eleven ordinance twenty twenty one dash zero three, amend chapter fifteen point thirty of the Toponish Municipal Code. We have a motion.
I will move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty one dash zero three, amend chapter fifteen dot thirty of the Toponish Municipal Code.
I'll second that.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Belton, seconded by Councilwoman DeBol to approve ordinance twenty twenty one dash zero three, amend chapter fifteen thirty of the Toponish Municipal Code. Is there any further discussion?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
The ayes would still have it for approving ordinance twenty twenty one dash zero three. At this point, we'll move on to item six C. AB twenty one dash zero twelve, resolution twenty twenty one dash zero nine. Approve local agency federal aid project prospect and supplement for the twenty twenty sidewalk improvement project. City manager Hoyt.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, before you, our, our two sidewalk projects that have been, uh, uh, hanging around since two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen. Uh, the first one is the, uh, let's see, is resolution two thousand twenty one, uh, zero nine. It relates to the, uh, uh, the Safe Routes to School program. It's a five hundred and twenty eight thousand, three hundred dollar grant with a ten percent, with a ten thousand dollar match from the Topney School District to do, uh, uh, some, complete some sidewalk improvements on Beach, Purn, Ellensburg Avenue and on Zilla and also on F and G Street in that part of town around Lincoln School, as well as in Lincoln Park, some, some, uh, trail on the one side. Uh, once again, that's a grant. Uh, what we're asking for is the local agency federal aid uh, project prospectus and the supplement to the local programs state funding agreement. Uh, these are required documents by Wash Dot Local Programs in order to go forward. Uh, council, uh, refresh council's memory. We did this last summer for the design portion of these projects. Now we're doing it for the construction portion of, of, uh, these projects. Uh, hope, we were hoping to have them link closer together last fall. However, COVID struck. Uh, Wash Dot does not work, uh, out of the office anymore. They telecommute. They only go in once every two weeks. Uh, so that kind of slows this whole process down. As well as in the local programs department, they had three employees. Uh, the director, uh, the head engineer, uh, took another job. So they, we had to, uh, recruit and replace his position. And one of the other, uh, engineer technicians retired and they had to recruit and fill that position. So we're, they're back at full staff and they're caught up on some paperwork. And we're ready to go forward with the Safe Routes to School project. And that is state funding. So I guess I need a motion to approve resolution, uh, two thousand and twenty one uh, dash zero nine, authorizing the city manager to sign the local agency project uh, prospectus and the supplement local program agency agreement for the two thousand and twenty sidewalk uh, improvements project, which is our Safe Routes to School project.
Make a motion. We do what he just said.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Jimenez and seconded by Councilman Garcia. To approve resolution twenty twenty one dash zero nine, approve local agency federal aid project and prospectus and supplement for the two thousand twenty sidewalk improvement project. Was there any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, we move on to item D. AB twenty one dash zero thirteen, resolution twenty twenty one dash ten. Approve local agency agreement supplement and local agency federal aid project prospectus for the West First Avenue Sidewalk Improvement Project.
This is a kind of a sibling project to, uh, the Safe Routes to School. Uh, this happens to be a West First Street sidewalk, uh, which will start at, uh, Buena Way uh, and, or Elm Street and go out to the, uh, west city limits on the south side of, uh, West First Street. Uh, this is a project that we got approved for funding, uh, about four years ago. And we're ready to go forward. Uh, we have all the required, uh, utilities moved, the power lines moved. We're ready to go forward with new curb gutter sidewalk, uh, and handicap accessibility, uh, to, to this basically from Carlson to the city limits there. It's a hundred and eighty two thousand, seven hundred and seventy five thousand dollar grant project. Uh, this is STB set aside, so this is actually federal money. Uh, our, our goal is, our plan is to, uh, uh, add both of these projects at the same time to get economy of scale. Cause one's pretty small, the other one's medium. Together they're a good sized project. Hopefully we can get, uh, positive bids for these two projects. However, one is state, one is federal money. Uh, the, uh, all the paperwork will be, uh, kept separate uh, for the, the funding agent, the different funding agency requirements. So once again, I am asking for a motion to approve, uh, resolution two thousand and twenty one dash ten. Authorizing the city manager to sign the local agency state funding agreement supplement and the local agency federal aid project prospectus for the West First Street, uh, excuse me, West First Avenue Sidewalk Project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Belton, seconded by Councilwoman Jimenez to approve resolution twenty twenty one dash ten. Approve local agency agreement and supplement and local aid agency federal aid project prospectus for the West First Avenue Sidewalk Improvement Project. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
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 And, and opposed? Hearing none, we move on to item six E. Set agenda for the March first, two thousand twenty one study session. City manager Hoyt.
Uh, we have two items for our study session tonight, uh, that we'd like to plan for. One is uh, back in, uh, January eleventh, we had a, uh, a Toponish Municipal Code, uh, amendment for chapters five, uh, point six five that had to do with, uh, uh, events, special events and, and, and their related permits. So council wanted to bring that back to a study session for further discussion. Uh, so that would be one topic we could have. And the second topic is, uh, back in two thousand and, and nineteen, we had, uh, the EMS director, Tony Miller, uh, along with, uh, Fire Chief Smith come in and, and give us a presentation on the current state of the EMS, uh, ambulance, uh, I guess, situation in Yakima County. Uh, since then, we, we've, uh, we gave them a letter of support. They've gone forward and gone out for, uh, ads or, or forbids for ambulance service. And they're ready to start talking about where they at, where they're at after these, uh, requests for proposals and what the, the county may see in the near future in regards to ambulance service in, and, uh, hopefully that would be about a twenty minute update. And so those are the two items I have for study session on, uh, March first. If anyone else have any, has any other items they'd like to bring up?
You know, since Tim's coming in, I know at one time the fire chiefs were meeting on, I believe it was something to do with the rates. Remember how we went to, up to you and I did and, and talked to with all those chiefs? Have they come up with an idea with a plan or, or is that something we talk about it since he's going to be there anyway?
That's a separate issue and we can have him speak to that. Uh, they've decided that had to do with, uh, uh, some, some levy uh, funding that we had and how they were, how that was distributed. And I think the Yakima, uh, county uh, fire departments have a new, uh, formula that, that'll happen the next time that goes to the vote of the people. So, I think that's
If you could just.
Two thousand and twenty three. It's getting close, so.
Yeah, I remember when we talked about it, we went to Washington, so.
Yeah.
Uh, just kind of an update as to where they're at would be good because I know that, uh, they were kind of divided from the Upper Valley and the Lower Valley. We're kind of divided on that. At least that's what I remember. So it'd be nice to get back on that so we know where, where they're at.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to item seven. Council meeting reports and community announcements. We'll start with Councilman Seha.
I have nothing to report.
Councilman Garcia.
Yeah, I attended the City Action Days agenda on February tenth and eleventh, and that was an all day session. And I tell you what, uh, I didn't realize there are a lot of people involved in this and, uh, it was a great session and everything, what, what, uh, sessions I was able to log on to and decided to uh, listen on and participate. Then we had, uh, towards the end of the first day, we had separate council members from different areas and we got together, we discussed stuff uh, that had affected up north and west of Seattle and everything. And then, um, areas over here on the east side, and there are quite, um, quite a bit of information we exchanged back and forth about the homeless population and stuff like that. And fire, fire, not fire, but, uh, PD and, and everything. Uh, it was quite quite, uh, interesting. You know, a lot of people got to listen to, the governor gave his speech at, uh, noon time. Um, and everything, got to listen to Gov- Governor Inslee and everything. And then, um, Thursday did the same thing. Uh, got to talk with some other people and everything. And then, um, it was, it was great, you know, uh, next one comes up like that, I'm going to, definitely sign up for it, you know? Got to talk to a lot of good people and a lot of ideas were thrown around and, you know, legislation and everything. And, um, other than that, I did help with the food distribution, um, on, um, fur and Washington Saturday, I took a few boxes to some, uh, people that elderly people from their, they're doing to their thing there at that church every Fri- every Saturday from ten to twelve. And everything, and they give you a box and it has, uh, meat, um, vegetables, uh, cheese, sour cream and butter. And so I took some boxes to my area. Cause they asked me if I knew anybody in my area that would benefit from this. And I, that's what I did. So I then, um, during our snow, I cleaned out one, two, three, four, five lots for people, my snow blower. And everything, which was, uh, you know, uh, elderly people, I knew they aren't going to be able to shovel it. So I just took my snow blower and went down and did a few lots for neighbors and everything. So that was quite, they, they all thanked me for doing it. Cause, uh, one of them said she, her back was hurting the first night she tried to shovel at night of all things. Now I told her, don't do it. I'll take care of it from now on. So that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Councilman Belton.
Uh, yeah, beans, we dealt with a couple sidewalk projects tonight and my travels around town during the snow. Uh, I want to thank all the businesses that took the time to clear their sidewalks and a few of the citizens. And I think maybe it's time we need to remind some people that if you have a sidewalk in front of your property, it's your responsibility to keep it. But the majority of our businesses, I was very, very proud to see that they, uh, they were out there every day, making sure things were good to go for our citizens. That's all I have.
Councilman Jimenez.
I do have a few things. I have a list. You know how that goes. Um, I did attend the conference, the government meeting along with Heidi Lance and, uh, Al Hubert. Al goes because he's on the planning commission and it's just great to hear, to have him there. And so all four of us attended. It, it was the shortest meeting ever. I think we were done in thirty minutes. That has never happened. Let me tell you, thirty minutes in and out. Uh, we had a presentation by Karen Frances McWhite. She is the Central Washington Outreach Specialist for the Department of Commerce. Um, and I know that Lance will speak more on it. I just want to touch on the fact that she has not forgotten about Toponish. If you guys remember, they were going to have this community forum where they were going to come and talk to us, a group of people. I think it was about twenty some, that were involved. But due to COVID, like, it was supposed to be like the day we shut down that we were supposed to all meet. But we couldn't meet because the governor shut us down. But she hasn't forgotten about us. She said we're one of three in the state who got this planning grant. Um, and so I'm sure Lance will give you more specifics of that when he reports on the meeting. But, uh, she still remembered us and I thought that was great to hear. Um, also want to remind people to go ahead and do the survey that, uh, we have going on. Lance, as you know, I know I got the little card in the mail asking me to do the survey. So I did online to the viewing public. You know, there's a chance for you to win a gift card. Um, I don't remember if it was like two hundred dollar gift card or something, but you know, if you want to make a little money on the side, if you think you're lucky, go ahead and do the survey. Maybe your name will be drawn. So do the survey. The survey will help us out a lot. Um, and then again, I want to thank our public works personnel for helping and working so hard during this. I call it the winter storm when we had the snow out there. I saw them come out once with the gravel and then later on I saw them downtown, um, plowing. So again, that's extra work for them. And I want to thank them for doing, uh, the best that they could do with the circumstances that were at hand. So thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Councilwoman DeBol.
And I just want to say, if you need someone to shovel your snow, call George. Not along with what uh Councilmember Jimenez was saying, this is the little postcard that we got in the mail. And um, this is what it looked like, okay? And I, the way you use it is you get your phone. And you act like you're gonna take a picture of it and it reads these little squares. Um, something will pop up, click on it and take the survey. So please get it done. It's important for our community. And for housing equity here in Tappanish. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
But if you're old school like me, cause I couldn't figure out the phone thing, just get online and do it on the WWW HPP, whatever, whatever. Type all that in and you can get there.
Very good.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Savedra.
I have nothing to report for the good of the order.
And I have nothing to report. So I'm gonna move on to item eight, city manager's report. Okay, city manager height.
Yeah, I also attended the uh uh YV cog dinner and and uh. Let's see, France, Karen Francis McWhite was there and she was the program. Uh, she's from Department of Commerce. And yeah, Toppingness, she's still on the list to go forward with our uh. Community uh priority meetings with the stakeholders. Uh, I talked with her uh. Uh, last Friday about that and we're hoping that maybe when we get to phase three, we'll have that opportunity to to get going. So we're thinking we're gonna be in a holding pattern until uh May and then see when we could have that opportunity to uh. Uh, to get that program going. Uh, maybe we'll be able to figure out how to to blend that program with the YV cog. Housing Priority Program. They kind of complement each other, so maybe we will be able to do uh. Two things at once there. So that's kind of the hope that we'll, we're gonna go forward and do. And uh, let's see. It's too efficient. I've lost my uh, my report here. Can you bring it back up? There we go. Uh. Why does it do that? Uh, give a police chief vacancy uh update. I called everyone last week to inform them that we we engaged the Proffman Company to assist us. Uh, they're right on the ball and they're very proactive. Uh, uh, this week there, they'll be having a a meeting with a a select group of. People that are that are in our organization. Uh, we have a couple council members, some department heads. Uh, some police department personnel to get kind of a feel for what our community and what our city and what our police department. Is looking for in a police chief. And so that's gonna be this week and that's running concurrent. Uh, they have the uh, on the Proffman Company website as well as the city website. Uh, we have posted the uh, the profile and the uh, the job uh, uh, announce, basically, which is the. Excuse me, the profile, which is the job announcement for the police chief for the city of Tappanish as well as the uh. The job spec that that relates to that. That's going to be go, that's ongoing from now till March twenty-first. Is when that application closes. That's three weeks, actually four weeks. The next part of the schedule between March twenty-second and twenty-ninth, uh, they'll, Proffman will screen all the applications. And sort them down to the top eight to fifteen applicants. Uh, then they'll compile up. The portfolios on each of those people. Uh, they'll share those with the city and and we'll, we'll discuss those. Items and hopefully get that uh semifinalist down internally, down to three to six people. Then at that time, we'll probably, which will be. April fifth, that week of April fifth to the ninth, hopefully we'll be able to set up a Zoom meeting for a work session. Uh, with the semifinalists and and discuss uh, the the final interview process. Which would hopefully happen if all things are rolling together. Uh, uh, would be April nineteenth. The the week of April nineteenth uh and the April, April twenty-sixth. Uh, they'll travel to to Tappanish. They'll come here. We'll have the final interview pop uh, uh, process and hopefully have some. Uh, we'll see where we are at that time. If we can have public uh, uh, meet and greet, or maybe we'll just have to do an invite. Uh, in a, as a special meeting and invite the public to uh, come online and and have a a virtual meet and greet. So that's kind of the the process that we have. Uh. Let's see, we have uh, uh. Mr. Bardwell has agreed to stay on uh until we we place our new uh, we hire our new police chief. And hopefully stay on till the end of that month to help him uh in his transition period. Uh. And so there's kind of the update on that. I'll I'll keep people filled in as that process uh matures. Uh, the second item I have tonight is the Public Works Office of vehicle storage. We had a bid opening on the third of uh February. Uh, it came in higher than the architect's uh estimate. By about four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we were amazed that that came in that high. Uh, we we queried the uh contractors and we found that. One of the main reasons for the high cost were anything, any building uh. Component made of wood has almost tripled in price. An example was a a bunk of two by sixes for studs on the walls. Uh, that used to be three hundred and twenty bucks for a thousand have now uh jumped up to over a thousand, two hundred dollars a buck. And so those are very high. Uh, and that follows suit with a numerous other pro uh. Products that are gonna be needed for this building process. Uh, we asked why, we thought, what what was their opinion? Why? Uh, the wood stuff happened because of forest fires that happened, uh, not to mention in conjunction with COVID. Uh, with that, that that uh suppressed supply, the lumber companies uh couldn't, couldn't work due to COVID, so they didn't make the lumber. The manufacturers weren't there uh making the products because they were impacted. So between forest fires, COVID, uh, and the new uh. Every time there's a a new federal administration, there's a change in pricing and and those types of things. So right now, it it's kind of a. Uh, I guess a casualty of supply and demand. There's so, there's a low supply and high demand, and so those prices are up. So what we're, we're doing now is we're going back and we're uh revisiting that scope of work on the project. We're gonna reduce it. Uh, down to the point where hopefully we could get uh. A a a building in a office building that are within the uh, uh, the funding constraints that we have available. Uh, hopefully we'll have that done by the end of this week. We'll go back out to add uh next week for. That two week period, I think that we have to do and we'll bring those uh, the results of that back uh to council hopefully uh. Uh, toward the end of of March, of, excuse me, of uh, in April sometime instead of March. Uh, so that's about a. That's kind of a uh depressing news, I thought, but at least we we know where we stand on that. Uh, we did query some contractors to find out where we could save money and uh we'll probably take their uh comments. Uh, uh, as we do that uh reduction in scope, so. So there, that's the public works update. Other West First Street Sidewalk Project and the Safe Routes to School Project. We plan to go to add in March and hopefully start that in April and have those projects done by midsummer and we'll have those done. Uh, the extreme weather shelter update, there really is none. Uh, we did have a a real ugly week weatherwise and uh. Uh, I was waiting back to hear uh if our uh. If the, if the people using, i- if the uh, the population went up higher, uh, we're assuming that it did with, with the bad weather. And so they wanted to wait and see how it is with lesser bad weather this week to see if that occupancy drops down. But they were able to uh service or help the people that they had. Uh, no uh additional. EMS or police calls out of the ordinary there. Uh. Also, uh, attended the city action days. It was always uh exciting and a good opportunity to network. Councilman uh, Garcia uh visited about the uh, the networking, how it was important. Uh, basically, what what we came out of that was uh. Budget, 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 budget is the big uh concern. Uh, they have to uh figure out the budget hat is uh dependent now on the uh. The Fish Culvert Program that we're, we're required to comply with. That's gonna take a lot of money out of the, the uh transportation budget. Uh, the shift from transportation is switching from uh constructing new projects. Uh, all over the state to preservation and maintenance of our existing projects. Uh. Then green projects were coming up, even uh, there's to the point where they have to start uh replacing the ferry fleet. And they're looking at starting with some uh. Green ferries, I guess, to be able to uh, uh, save uh fuel and but still maintain their, the ferry program. Uh, and if you notice that the the flags are at stat half staff, uh, they'll be half staff, I think for. This week, that's to honor the uh, in remembrance of of uh the COVID pandemic lives lost so far. Uh, we hit the five hundred thousand mark today or yesterday. So that's sad news, but the flags are at half staff. Think of those people and their families. That's all I have tonight.
Okay, we'll move on to item nine is adjournment. That's a good one. I want y'all to hear it. Put a hole in the desk.
See you one. Bye.
Have a good evening, everyone.